Hey Nicole, can you bring up?
Intro started, stand by.
The, um... The deal for, uh... The Sunflower Summer Program. Can you bring that up for me?
Thirty seconds. Twenty. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three.
Good morning Commissioners and welcome to the Wednesday, June 1st, 2022 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Akim Ashford, the Communications Director. Sedgwick County Environmental Resources will hold a Household Hazardous Waste Event and Remote Collection Event this Saturday, June 4th, from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. at Textron Aviation, Beechcraft. The location is the Division Parking Lot E, Gate C6. For more information, visit the Sedgwick County Facebook Page or sedgewickcounty.org. You've heard about the move County Administrative Departments will be making, and that time is now. This is a two-month process that is starting today. County Departments will make the move to the Ruffin Building located at 100 North Broadway Street. We will have the Department move dates listed on social media and the county website. All phones and emails will remain the same, so please continue to reach out to Departments as you have before. We will commit, we will continue to communicate details about the move as they happen. At this time Commissioners, I'd like to invite Stephanie Birmingham to the podium to give you an update on Recovery Connect.
Morning Stephanie.
Good morning, Commission. Good to be here. Again, my name is Stephanie Bergman Birmingham. I'm your COVID ARPA, Public Information Officer. Even though COVID numbers are very low right now, the county is aware that many people are still suffering financially from the pandemic, so I'd like to take this chance to again remind people about Recovery Connect. This is a county initiative funded by the American Rescue Plan Act. It is a free service. All people have to do is call in, and our community navigators will connect them to the grants and loans, whatever assistance best suits their needs. So, this is for individuals, nonprofits, and businesses. We have a couple great programs I'd like to highlight today. The first one is the Kansas Emergency Rental Assistance. We've talked in the past about help available for those at risk of losing their homes. This is for tenants who also are at risk of becoming homeless. They also have to demonstrate a hardship caused by COVID, so that could be a loss of job, a loss of household income. It could just be a significant expense caused by COVID. This provides money for rent, utilities, and internet service. Tenants and landlords apply jointly, so what I love about this, they're not pitted against each other. This is a cooperative thing. If approved, the funds are paid directly to the landlord on behalf of the tenant. They are eligible for up to eighteen months of assistance, and another great thing, this can apply to past bills, or if you're afraid that in the future you're going to have trouble paying your rent, it can apply to future bills. Another program we want to highlight is the Affordable Connectivity Program. This is for high-speed internet, and we know these days internet is not a luxury, it's a necessity. This program helps low-income residents pay for internet and broadband services. There are income requirements, but basically if your household is eligible for SNAP, for free school lunches, or Medicaid, you are eligible for this. You can get up to thirty dollars per month, per household, so just one per household, and again, that is paid directly to the internet provider. You can also, in addition, get a one-hundred-dollar voucher to buy computer equipment to allow you internet access. So again, if you need to work remotely, if you're going to school online, if you get healthcare services, maybe telehealth conferences, you can get a voucher to help you get the equipment needed. This is a fourteen-billion-dollar federal program, so all the money will be given out. It will continue until all the funds are expended. Now, again, people can find information on their own, but I really encourage them to call Recovery Connect because our navigators can not only help them find out if they're eligible, but they may be eligible for more than one program. So, let Recovery Connect do the work for you. Again, it is free, it's a county program, and this is what your tax money goes for. So, to contact Recovery Connect, you can call 978-6737, or you can email them. Any questions?
Well, thank you Stephanie. I don't see any questions right now, but you started your briefing saying that COVID is going down. We have a couple key members of our staff that are out with COVID right now, so it's not gone away. I'll make sure that you still take some precautions, and if you haven't been vaccinated, please be vaccinated.
That's right. Good advice. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you Stephanie. Alright. Commissioners, can you believe it's the fiftieth anniversary of Riverfest? You've seen the signs, booths, and excitement. Now it's time to enjoy it all. As a longtime sponsor, Sedgwick County is excited to take part in the festivities this week. It will be on hand to assist visitors throughout the entire Riverfest event. For more information about Riverfest, visit riverfest, wichita riverfest.com for program information.
Akim, while you're on that...
Yes, sir.
The Riverfest Parade starts Friday at seven, uh, six-thirty rather, out in front, and Sedgwick County is involved in that. We want to make sure that the staff and all the electeds know that they are invited to march with us, and also Congressman Estes is asked to march with Sedgwick County. So, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew about the parade, starting at six-thirty, right out in front of our courthouse on Friday afternoon.
Thank you Commissioner. We're actually going to send out an email right after this. After I sit down, we'll be able to send that email to all, to all the electeds, so we'll have that coming up next.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Kansas families can visit dozens of attractions throughout the state for free, including Exploration Place, Botanica, the Kansas Aviation Museum, the Sedgwick County Zoo, the Mid-American All Indian Museum, Wichita Art Museum, Wichita Sedgwick County Historical Museum, and Old Cowtown Museum. So quite a bit of opportunities. Families with kids in pre-K through 12th grade can download the Sunflower Summer App to receive free access, all-access passes funded through the Kansas State Department of Education to keep learning going over the summer. The program runs from May 28th through August 14th.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you so much for bringing this up. So this actually is across the state. There are eighty different area or places that kids and families can go and utilize this, and it's really neat that Kansas is going to pay these organizations back for any tickets that, that they are, that are used in their, with their organization. So like with Exploration Place as an example, this started last summer, and was only for half a summer, and it was just incredible, the amount of people that utilize this, and I just, I really can't wait to see what happens this year now that it's opened up even more. Thank you for bringing this up.
Thank you Commissioner. And we've got that website pulled up for you there, sunflowersummer.org, and again, you can download the app, sunflowersummerapp. Commissioners, taking a look at today's agenda, there's a resignation of Nancy Hinton from the District III Advisory Board, and the appointment of Michael Mitchell to this position. A resolution appointing Jamie Tyson to the Sedgwick County Grievance Board in the Classified Employee Position as recommended by Human Resources Director Sheena Smuts, pursuant to procedures adopted by Human Resources through the voting process of the classified county employees. A resolution appointing Mara Thompson to the Sedgwick County Grievance Board in the Alternate Classified Employee Position as recommended by Human Resources Director Sheena Smuts. Under New Business, a consideration of amendment to previously approved Sedgwick County Department of Corrections Grant and the exception, the acceptance of additional allocations, and then on a report of the Boards and Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting from May 26, 2022. And with that Chairman Dennis, I turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Thank you Akim. I appreciate it. I want to welcome everyone that's in the audience and those that are joining us online and on KPTSD today. I want to remind the Commissioners that immediately following this meeting, we'll take a real short break and come right back to this room again. It's not part of the meeting, so our, our meeting will be adjourned, but we're coming back because we're going to talk about compensation. It, as far as I know right now, it won't be broadcast on KPTSD, but it will go out over our Facebook page and over the internet and our website. So, just stand by all the Commissioners, so we'll just take a short break whenever the, this meeting's over. Again, I want to welcome everyone, and with that, I'll call the meeting to order for June 1st, 2022. Madam Clerk, next item.
Invitation to be led by Father Dave Marstall, St. Anne's Catholic Church, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you. Good morning, and just invite everyone to participate as their own faith allows. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Good and gracious God, in every age, you have raised up men and women outstanding in virtue, and filled them with wisdom to be able to lead, and guide, protect, and provide for your people. We pray that you would fill those who are gathered here, those who are watching with your Holy Spirit, fill them with wisdom, and with grace, and with understanding, and deep respect for all human life, especially those who are here present and those who are most in need. Father, we pray that you would bless us with your wisdom, with your, with your understanding. Hope it's in all things to, to be able to serve you and to be able to, to provide for the people that you have created that you love. Father, we ask these things through Christ our Lord, amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father Marstall, thank you very much. We sincerely appreciate you being here to give the invocation. Madam Clerk, next item please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item please.
Public Agenda.
Thank you. We did receive one item over the internet, but I believe the individual that sent that item is in the audience to speak today, so I'm going to go to the public first. And Brandy Prime, please approach the podium, state your name for the record. You'll have five minutes.
I am Brandy Prime. Hello all. I'm a combat veteran, a reader of science, philosophy, and fiction, an aspiring writer, soft target, and a concerned white woman. I am here to talk about Crime Stoppers and to name an illness in hopes of helping with community healing. Crime Stoppers is a program that uses community engagement to catch suspects in crime, of crime after suspected criminal activity has occurred. And I understand now that it's a city program, but it is something that I'm talking to the county about for a specific reason. I've recently been reading All About Love, New Visions by Bell Hooks, and I feel it is relevant here. A good philosophy book takes me a while. I don't just look at the words and skim. I take notes and use it as a lens if I feel convicted, convicted by it. All About Love is a book that has both convicted me and filled me with conviction. She quotes Dr. M. Scott Peck as echoing psychologist Eric Fromm on this definition of love, "The will to extend oneself for one's own or another's spiritual growth." She lists these as the components of love, care, commitment, trust, knowledge, responsibility, respect, and affection. She also writes about the dangerous narcissism fostered by spiritual rhetoric that pays so much attention to individual self-improvement and so little to the practice of love within the context of community. She explains at length about how a consumer culture driven by greed and a lust for power and wealth sets the stage, the perfect stage, for criminal activities such as selling drugs, stealing cars, running guns, or other stereotypically gang activities, how those with power and wealth are addicted to it, and how all of it is evidence of a lack of understanding of love in community. Hooks also wrote about how systems of domination require each and every one of us be socialized to believe that in all human relations there are inferior and superior parties, despite all evidence to the contrary about the supposed inferiority and superiority. On April 28th, I showed it at the beginning of the year on the Sedgwick County Crime Stoppers Facebook page. I don't know why I initially did this, but I noticed a trend, and it noticed, and it worried me, so I started recording data. The rate at which black folks' photos were being posted was twenty-two percent higher than census data compared to twelve percent less than for white folks, and five percent less for Latinx folks. I asked myself, what impact might this have on our communities? Yesterday, I dug deeper, and I did other research, and I found that childhood trauma was a really big factor in incarceration. And I have metric boatloads of childhood trauma, and the one big thing I think kept, that kept me out of prison was community supports, and the fact that I have access to VA healthcare. And I think the reason that I had access to those community supports largely is because I'm white. So with that said, the illness that I'm here to name is white nationalism. It encourages those of us classed as white to believe the paradox that white nationalism doesn't exist, except in the past, especially within our own minds, while the evidence of it is plain to see everywhere. Rid bold on the rifle oven in the manifesto of the Buffalo shooter, on the Sedgwick County Crime Stoppers Facebook page, and throughout our history. The paradox, this paradox, and our addiction to whatever power we think we hold is what allows the violence of white nationalism in all its forms to continue throughout the centuries. I'm white. I see it because I dig deep into our histories. I listen when people say they are hurting, and rather than getting defensive when I get it wrong, I ruminate vociferously on love and correct myself. This commission is uniquely positioned to promote love in community. A good place to start would be using the resources that are available to the county to bolster the social services that are already in place to help prevent crime at its source, which is healing the trauma that's out there, promoting the general welfare of the people in our lovely county as directed by the U.S. Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prime. I appreciate you being here today. I did follow up after I got your email last night. The Facebook page, there's actually two Facebook pages out there. One of them is the Real Facebook page, and one of them is something that someone else put up that says it's the Crime Stoppers Facebook page, which it has the ability for anybody to post anything on it. The actual Facebook page that Crime Stoppers has up is actually run by the Wichita Police Department, not by Sedgwick County. So, I just wanted to let you know there are two different Facebook pages out there, and one of them is the actual, and one of them is not.
Right, and I, I am being clear. I was, I was looking at the actual one.
Okay, sounds good. I appreciate it. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you Chairman. Thank you Brandy for being here today. This is not an easy topic to discuss, and I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. I have asked a few of the Crime Stoppers members in an email last night, how, how is the data collected, how is it, how are posts decided to be made off of the form or from submissions online? So there is some additional information I've asked because of your comments, and I just wanted to let you know that I have asked some folks for additional data. So I appreciate...
Thank you. And I'm happy to answer any other questions. I completely forgot. I'm not, this isn't, this isn't my scene, this isn't my jam. I don't do this, so, but I do my homework, because it's all I know how to do. So, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. I just, when I walked away from the podium, I just assumed that was because my five minutes was up, and so, but if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them, because I've been doing my research and I've been doing my homework.
Well, thank you, Ms. Prime. I don't see any further questions, but I appreciate you being here. I appreciate you sending an email so I could start doing a little bit of research before the meeting, and we will follow up. Thank you.
Super. Thank you.
And since both the Public Agenda and the, well, first of all, let me ask, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak during Public Agenda that didn't sign up today? Seeing none, I'm going to make one motion, since it deals with the same subject that we receive and file, the Public Agenda from both in-person and online. We have a motion and a second A discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item please.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, Special Meeting Minutes of May 12, 2022.
Thank you. Commissioners, everyone that's had an opportunity to review the special minutes from May 12th, move to approve. We have a motion and a second A discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item please.
Appointments. Item B, accept the resignation of Nancy Hinton from the District III Citizens' Advisory Board.
Mr. Papun.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, County Counselor. We can handle Items B and C together since they involve the same general subject. Item B is to accept the resignation of Nancy Hinton. Ms. Hinton, I think in the backup indicates she's moving out of state, so can no longer be part of the District III Citizens Advisory Board. And Item C is the resolution appointing Michael Mitchell upon the recommendation of the Chairman to replace Ms. Hinton. So, resolution for Michael Mitchell in proper form, and as you approve the resolution, accept this sentence resignation.
Thank you, Mr. Papun. Well, first of all, I want to thank Nancy Hinton. She has been a tremendous help on my Citizens Advisory Board. She served on it for a number of years, and she is moving out of state, so she cannot continue to serve. I thank her very much. I did have immediately one individual that had provided the resume, and that is Michael Mitchell, and I am very happy that he has volunteered to serve and provide time and effort to help Sedgwick County. So I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Nancy Hinton and appoint Michael, Michael Mitchell to that position. We have a motion and a second A discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And Mr. Mitchell is in the room. If you'll approach the podium, they're going to swear you in, and you'll have an opportunity to speak if you'd like to. Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners. Alright, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Third District Citizens Advisory Board to help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
And you need to sign. Once you sign, why, you're a member of the District, Citizens' Advisory Board for District III. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. We appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item please.
Item D, Resolution Appointing Jamie Tyson to the Sedgwick County Grievance Board in the Classified Employee Position.
Mr. Papun.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, County Counselor. Again, Items D and E can be taken together because they involve the same general subject matter. Item D is a resolution appointing Jamie Tyson to the Sedgwick County Grievance Board, and Item E is appointing as a alternate employee classified position, Mara Thompson, to the same board. There is a vote that's conducted by Human Resources to find classified employees that want to be a member of this board. Ms. Tyson received the most votes, and hence she's, she is the active grievance board member, and Mara Thompson received the second most votes, so she will be in the alternate position. Both resolutions appointing Ms. Tyson and Ms. Thompson are in proper form as you adopt the resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Papun. I appreciate it. I move the, oh, just, Mr., I'm sorry, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question. Do we have a, a, can someone please describe the process by which the recommendations were processed? I mean, were the other employees that were eligible for these positions, were they ever notified, and was there some type of communication that went out, or were these just handpicked? I just don't know what the process was.
And I actually talked to the HR Director, Sheena Smuts, prior to the meeting this morning, but I didn't get into the actual process other than that it's a vote conducted by Human Resources. I don't know how many people were notified, how many people were given the opportunity to be on the ballots and so on, Commissioner. I, we can ask, we can delay these appointments and have Sheena Smuts explain the entire process, or I can get to those answers later.
Sheena is not available to be in person at the meeting today. She is going to be zooming in later, so we can get an explanation from her. As Mike said, we could defer this for today. If you need an explanation on it, we'll get it to you.
I, I, I am likely to support this. I just would like to understand the process. And again, I've had some concerns about the grievance board in the past. I think it's one of those things where the employees need to feel like they've got a fair shake at everything, and I want to make sure employees feel supported. So, I, I would like to make a motion. We would, we would defer these, these two motion, these two agenda items for, at time, to get some answers to that question.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second A discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. We will put this on the agenda for the June the 8th. Thank you for being here today. Madam Clerk, next item please.
New Business. Item F, consideration of amendment to previously approved Sedgwick County Department of Corrections Grants and Acceptance of Additional allocations. Grant 33-21-000258 in the amount of $200,125.71, and Grant 33-21-000259 in the amount of $239,830.53.
Martin Rusty.
Good morning. Good morning Chairman, Commissioners. Rusty Lee, Assistant County Manager. As you are, there's been some discussion with you previous. For the fiscal year 2022, you had previously approved grants from the state of Kansas. These are comprehensive plan grants for both the adult programming and for juvenile. On the juvenile side, the monies go to fund GIAC operations and juvenile field services. On the adult side, the monies go to fund adult field services, specifically the intensive supervision, as well as to fund a significant portion of adult residential. The adult side also funds the behavioral health programming that is done with the adults. During the last, or the current legislative session, additional monies were allocated for these two grants to community corrections to support compensation for employees in those programs, the qualified employees in those programs, in order to bring those folks up closer to or equal to the wages of state correction workers, because the state had increased their pay dramatically and put community corrections across the state in a bad position as far as being able to retain and hire staff. So that's what this is today, is this is the allocation for the fourth quarter of fiscal year 22. There will be a second allocation for fiscal year 23 that will come later, but this is strictly for the fourth quarter of fiscal year 22. In other words, April through June of this year, to supplement the funding for the sake of compensation of those community corrections workers. So the grants are in the amount of $200,125.71 for the juvenile side, and $239,830.53 for the adult side. And what we ask today is that you approve these amendments. that you approve these amended allocations, and that you allow the chairman to sign in order for those monies to be available in our coffers for community corrections.
Thank you, Rusty. Do anyone have any questions on this? I know all the Commissioners have been briefed on this, and that this is going to help us increase the compensation for these workers. So it is definitely something that is very important to us at this point. So, I don't see any questions. I move that we approve the grant as read. We have a motion and a second A discussion. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And before we go forward, I understand that Sheena is on the line at this point in time. If Commissioner Howell would like to answer the questions, maybe we can go back to that item.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, my, my motion was just simply to defer for a time, and that would be appropriate if, if we can get answers. I don't mind going back to that agenda item right now. Anyway, my question would be, you know, what was the process by which these selections were made?
She's muted.
Sheena, are you hearing the question?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead. Did you hear Commissioner Howell's question?
I, I believe I heard on the process. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, there was a notification that went out asking for nominations. Of those nominations, we received, we put those out to a vote to all non-exempt employees, so everyone had a chance to vote on those. And these two employees were the top two that received votes.
Okay. More questions?
No more questions.
No more questions.
Very good. Well, with that, Madam Clerk, we're going back to items Delta and Echo. And I move that we approve items Delta and Echo, appointing Jamie Tyson to the Grievance Board, and Mara Thompson as the alternate.
Second.
We have a motion and a second A discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And-
Chairman, can you check to see if that person is here? I don't know if the employee is here. She is. And we, we're ready to get the clerk back up.
We're, we're trying to get the clerk back. In the meantime, we will swear you in, but we might as well go on and take care of bids and contracts. And in the meantime, if you don't mind waiting a few moments. And Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item G, report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on May 26, 2022.
Good morning, Joe. We're getting you here early.
Yes. I'm just amazed. I'm happy. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas Perchin, Director for the Record. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of May 26 has resulted in three items that we're presenting to you this morning, early morning. First one is bridge improvements. There are two of them. One is the bridge located on Ridge Road between 61st and 69th Streets North, and the second improvement will be on the bridge on Ridge Road between 109th and 117th Streets North. With that being said, the recommendation is to accept the low bid from PBX Corporation in alternate one in the amount of $846,095.90. Our second item is the Fishbowl Software Renewal Extension for Emergency Management, and this recommendation is to accept the quotes from Fishbowl Solutions LLC, and that's for a one-year renewed, renewed extension, and that's for the Fishbowl inventory software that they use, and from Sharp Concepts for a one-year renewal extension, and that's for the Lily Pad Vortex software that links the two together. This item is also being funded by the American Rescue Plan Act. Item number three, public, final item, public safety uniforms and web-based ordering system for various departments, and this recommendation is to accept the proposal from Galls LLC, and that's based on the Byboard Cooperative Purchasing Contract 670-22, and that's to establish contract rates, and it's good through May 31 of 2023. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval of the three items.
Thank you, Joe. I don't see any questions at this time. All of us had an opportunity to review the minutes. I move that we approve Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
We have a motion and a second A discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you, Joe. We appreciate it. And our county clerk is back. Welcome, Mr. Arnold. And at this time, we'll go back and swear in.
Good morning again, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Grievance Board, classified employee position. So help me God.
I do.
There you go.
Congratulations. Would you like to make any statement?
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Not sure. Well, you're going to have to sign, and then you'll be official. Well, she's signing. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent agenda.
Mr. Manager.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner. Tom Still's County Manager's office recommend approval of consent items H through V this morning. I'd like to call out item J, which is a donation from Bob Simpson Construction Services to Calm Care of $300 for suicide prevention. Simpson Construction does a lot of stuff for the community. I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware that they were generous enough to make a contribution to a, to a great county function.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager, and thank you to Simpson Construction for the generous donation. I don't see any question, well, first of all, I move that we approve consent item Hotel through Victor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second A discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
I don't believe we have anything for legislative issues since they have adjourned. We'll go on to the next item, please.
Committee reports.
Do any Commissioners have anything, community reports? I don't see anything at this time. Next item, please.
Other.
Other. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. So, a few weeks ago, Chairman Dennis and I went to San Antonio to visit Haven for Hope, and we were going to do this presentation right after, but that meeting had to be, it went really late, and we had another meeting right after, so we wasn't, we just weren't able to do it that day. So, just a quick kind of highlights from the trip. This is the group of people that went with us. Hutton and Lang allowed us to use their planes to go there, which was really helpful, and it was a really unique experience because there wasn't very many of us that went, and we were able to sit down with leadership there and really ask them a lot of questions, and, and then hopefully have some follow-up meetings later as well. So it really was important that we were able to go and, and speak to everybody the way we did. So Haven for Hope opened in 2010. I know a lot of people probably know about Haven for Hope, because as we talk about models for Sedgwick County and what mental health could look like, it gets brought up a lot because it really is kind of the gold standard in what everybody wants to do in bringing those resources together. It is located next to a jail and a hospital, but it was not a requirement. The reason they moved in that area is because it was open warehouse space, and it was the best option that they had at that time. They do provide multiple different mental health services on the campus, and they have a community crisis center similar to Calm Care. It is located right outside of the campus, but they said that it does not have to necessarily be there. It was, again, just something that worked out that way for them. We have different options, I think, going for what, if we do something similar to this, because our, we have FQHCs that really can do a lot of things internally of the campus that even Haven for Hope doesn't necessarily do. So I think there's, there's just different options there. One thing that was really cool that we were able to do is tour the facility and learn from the people who designed it, things that they wish they had known, and things they wish they could do over, and kind of give us a few of those things. So one of those was, they mentioned that the chapel that's on campus is used as a multi-use space, and it's always booked. And so that one thing that they wish they had done was added more multi-use space in, within the campus, and so the chapel wouldn't always have to be used for different activities. But there are hundreds of nonprofits that provide support. Not all of them are actually on the campus, but the ones that are have to do, they just pay an $80 a month flat fee, which is relatively cheap, but that gives them the space, internet access, includes phones, all of that. And each nonprofit that they work with has separate fundraising from Haven for Hope, and they have a contract that they've worked out with each of them that allows them to work together without stepping on each other's toes. Haven for Hope has, oh, sorry, where are we at? I think-
Go back one.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. When they're selecting their community partners that they're working with, their missions really do have to align. They don't want to do a whole bunch of duplication of services because that's expensive, and it makes it a lot easier when they work together. So they're really strict on making sure that missions and everything that they're working on together is going to really be in collaboration and not in competition with each other. And staff for Haven for Hope meets with their partners monthly, on a monthly basis, just to do checkups and to see where they're at and make sure that they're all still on mission. The clients of the program have to live in that county for nine months. It doesn't have to be for the nine months right before, but they have to be able to prove that they've lived in that county for nine months before they are able to be accepted. And before they move on to the campus, they, the clients will work with, did you want to add something? Oh, sorry. Okay. Before they move on the campus, the, the clients do work with different people that help them set up a plan for them so they can wrap those services around them. And then once they move on campus, there's not a window of time they have to have things done, or, you know, they can only stay for so long. It really is, as long as they're working on that plan that they created before they moved on campus, they can continue living there. I think they said one family that had eight or nine kids was, was there for almost two years because they just had a lot that they needed to get through, and, and they were able to help them out. And they also help clients by finding employment with benefits, so they don't want to just help them find, you know, jobs that are, might not have those kind of services, but they really do kind of wrap them around, not just with services, but to help them build and be successful for their future. And Haven for Hope also hires past clients to work on their campus. They think peer support is really one of the things that helps them succeed because their, their clients and their peers, it's just easier to have someone to talk to that has gone through some of the situations that they have, and they really have said that's part of their success is they think that, because they hire peers. They did have to work with the county to make sure that they updated their hiring policies so they could hire felons and allow that. So if we ever got to that stage, that's something that we would have to look into. And then when you first come into, onto the campus, they have lockers that you can store your belongings in. You don't necessarily have to go into the program, but if you just want a safe space, you can stay in their courtyard there. And one thing that we, they did talk about and they stressed was the security on campus. They didn't, they weren't sure if they wanted to hire like a third party, or to have police officers come in and help. And so the way they did it was they have their own security staff there. That way they can control their training, and the people on campus will get to know them, and it's not just a new person every time, you know, every day. So internal into the gates, it's all their own staff, but externally, that's monitored by the police in the area. And then all of their community partners have access to their HMIS system, and it's free for their partners, and they were actually able to expand their HMIS system so it does their door access, and it helps them with their timekeeping, and, and so it does more than what the normal HMIS system does. And so that's something that I think that we should also look into. And I know, I know that you guys have been doing a lot of that work already, so I won't say anything and step on any toes there, but-
What HMIS is?
Well, if you want to-
Homeless Management System.
Yeah. And you can, I'll let everybody else explain anything that they want to add to it, but I just thought it was really interesting that they were able to expand upon those services with the system and, and make it so it's useful for, like I said, like door access and timekeeping and all of that. And they also stress at the end that homelessness is a continuum, and it has many causes, and Haven for Hope is definitely not the fix for anything, but it does help them. And they're really concerned when they're looking at their area in San Antonio, just with housing and everything that's going on, that even though they're able to do so much work today, that doesn't mean that if things don't get better in other areas that they're going to be able to continue that. So they really wanted to stress that this problem is, is such a huge issue, but it's not just homelessness. I mean, there's so many other things that have to be looked into. So I, again, I'll let anybody else say anything. I know Commissioner Dave Dennis would probably add a little bit more, but that's just like really high level of what we were able to see and, and then hear from them. And hopefully, we'll be able to set up some meetings going forward that we can ask some other questions about partnering with people and making sure that, that we, if we do anything like this, and hopefully we can, but Wichita is such a different city than San Antonio, and there would have to be a lot, a lot of things that worked for this organization, I just don't think would work for Wichita. So there's a lot of moving parts there, but if you wanted to add anything.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is actually was my third trip down to San Antonio. The first time, there was a grant that Via Christi received, and a number of us tried to fly down and back the same day commercial. Well, we had three out of four planes break at some point, and so we spent almost the entire day in the airports trying to get down there and trying to get back. And so we spent so little time on the ground that really, basically, I, I got to see the front gate and a lot of airports. The second time down was a little more valuable. At that point, we got the community involved, and this is critical to get the community involved in any of these discussions. And so the Chamber of Commerce had a city-to-city tour. The only drawback to that was the number of people on that trip was fairly great, and we didn't have the opportunity to speak one-on-one with the different providers to ask the questions that we needed to ask. So this third trip was actually the most important, and I learned more on the third trip than any of the rest of them because we were able to get down there right away and back, and so we got, had a lot of time on the ground where we could actually meet with the staff. And they brought in all of the, about 15 different critical staff members, all the way from people that provide food service with the contract, of course, but the contract for that. The people that provide security, the people that provide mental health services, the people that provide the homeless services. And as was mentioned, homelessness is a continuum. It really is rooted to begin, in some cases with mental health, but a large number of them, it's rooted in poverty. So you have to figure out how that you can provide the low-cost homes for the individuals. The other thing is, as they develop this model, it's evolved. They're changing constantly. They learn from what happened in the past. Every provider isn't, that can provide services is not on campus or even associated with this organization. They pick the ones that meet their mission, and occasionally, they have a backup, but most of the time, it's a single provider. They try and provide a lot of their services off-campus so that the, the service provider can use their normal facilities in order to be able to provide those services. Commissioner Lopez mentioned the chapel. One of the things I thought was interesting is that chapel's used during the week as a chapel, but it's not used on Sunday as a chapel because they want those clients to become part of the community. So they want the community to come and pick those clients up and take them to their services so that they can be part of the community there. So I thought that was very important. Again, I, I was more impressed every time I go down there with what they've done. Remember, San Antonio is three times the size of Wichita, and so it's going to have a little bit different flavor, but they've gone through a change over the, since 2010 when they, when they came into being. And so we can learn from those different things that change. One other thing before I turn it over to Commissioner Cruz is that when you come out of homelessness, you had to have, as Commissioner Lopez mentioned, you had to have a plan. They find you a job that has benefits. You don't go out and pick up a job that doesn't have benefits because you're going to be right back in, into Haven for Hope again. So they build a plan, they get them a job, then they find them a place to live that they can afford based on this job that they got. And then when you go- And then, when you go into a new location, you don't have furniture, you don't have towels, you don't have toothbrushes, you don't have everything that you need in order to go in. So they've got a huge warehouse right outside the campus so that they provide everything, sheets, towels, you name it, that they need in order to be able to move into this housing that they've gotten for them. So the way that it's established, I think, is a good way for us to take a look at the future. But again, everything that they did probably wouldn't work here in Wichita. So I'll turn it over to Commissioner Cruz for any questions or any comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm so delighted that we're having this conversation today. I'm glad that you guys went down. On my second trip, I had a really in-depth conversation as well. Got to meet with the folks who do a lot of the fundraising for that. It was a really intimate discussion. So I'm glad that you guys got a chance to go see it. When it comes down to it, the nuts and bolts of it, this whole system has saved Bear County $96 million because of the cost avoidance when it came to emergency rooms and courtrooms. And that's in their first eight years of operation. The other thing is, we talk about bookings in our jail, which we have a jail here. Haven for Hope was able to...in 2009, there were 41,460 jail bookings. In Haven's first year of operation alone, they reduced that number of jail bookings by 3,323 jail bookings. So when you talk about systematic change, that's the type of systematic change that we need. When you have fewer people being booked into the jail, you have fewer inmates in the jail, you have less of a need for as many deputies in the jail. So it's a trickle effect. That's the thing, I think, when we talk about location, when we talk about all this other stuff, we have to be really centered around how the community and the individuals who are getting the care and giving the care, how they best work. It isn't about space available that a contractor has. It isn't about anything other than what is best for our community where it goes. So that brings me to my question, Mr. Manager. We had talked about having an outside consultant come in to look at all of the locations, all of the services we have, understanding models around the country like the one in Bear County. And so, where are we at with that?
We had a meeting this week, several of us did, with Dr. Muma and his architect team that he has in the city looking for the education center. And part of that analysis will be not only where that center geographically should go, but where a social service hub would fit in and what happens with...a recommendation of what to do with Calm Care Crisis. So he is looking at that. They are analyzing that. There's going to be a fairly quick turnaround on that discussion and then hopefully identify a footprint or a corridor where these all can be proximal to one another and work together. So that discussion is ongoing, Commissioner.
Okay. So when you say "ongoing," I understand the need for the discussion around the health sciences education component. But right now, we have boots-on-the-ground folks who are leaving our services, who are burnt out to the max, and we need to give them a sense of hope that we are...that things are going to get better. And so, when we talk about all the influences that influence commissioners, that influence the community at large, business folks, how do we have an outside perspective? And how are we, as Calm Care, going to plant a $15 million expansion in our community? How are we taking hold of where that should go and not letting outside influences, but working with them in conjunction to have an outside entity look to see where that is best placed in this community for the people utilizing the service? So what I'm asking is, are...is WSU and KU, are they planning to have an outside consultant look at the system as a whole or just for their education component and where that should go?
All the above. And I might add that in this discussion is the business community and downtown business owners. They're part of this discussion. So all of the above is being discussed. And I guess we...I think Steve Clark, who is the architect that is managing this and his team, need a little bit of time to get their boots on the ground and talk to people about how these processes work and the needs going forward. And then, really, alls they're going to give is an example of what a corridor could like. Then, the trick is, and I know you've all been to San Antonio, but there has to be some seed funding at this point. I mean, it comes down to some money on how we push these things forward and do what you say, which is tilt the system differently. That will require some type of seed money, and I think in San Antonio, they got Valero money or some other private dollars coming in. It would be beneficial if we could identify private dollars or public dollars, whatever the commission wants to decide, to help push this forward. So I think we give Steve and his team a chance. We have input in that. It's simply a recommendation. If the commission does not like the recommendation as far as where Calm Care Crisis goes, you don't have to accept that recommendation. The commission controls that component of the system. So we get their recommendation and we see if we like it. And if we don't, we go in the other direction.
So what's the timeframe on that?
I think they want Mr. Clark to have recommendations on this corridor by midsummer, by in July. It's a fairly quick turnaround. We're almost into...we are into June today, June 1st. So six weeks.
Okay. So the service providers, our homeless service providers, our other mental health providers, United Way, how are they having a seat at that table as well?
I don't know if Steve's going to involve them. I'm sure that they're going to try to talk to as many as possible. And Robin Clark, for example, is in that...I'm sorry, Robyn Chadwick is in that meeting and speaks on behalf of the Coalition, Mental Health Coalition, and is making those types of recommendations.
Great. Well, I look forward to...do you have a, like a written, like synopsis of what that conversation?
I can develop one from our meeting, which was yesterday.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Meidner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for this, Commissioner Lopez and Chairman, for going down there in this presentation. I've looked at...I've never been there, but I've looked at the website a lot. We've had a lot of discussion about it. And so, to have this added...your observation, your added comments about that was helpful for me to even understand further. So I just wanted to appreciate everything you're doing on that. It's very good. I would also...I...Tom, I'm in support of this outside entity looking at all the options. I mean, sometimes, we're all so close to the problem that I think it's very healthy to have the...this consultant look at everything with some fresh eyes and give their observation. So I'm looking forward to seeing what they say. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wasn't going to speak, but since the other four commissioners did, I feel like I need to say something here. But I am personally frustrated. I go back to the en banc meeting we had just a few months ago. And I identified what I think is a major part of this discussion that really hasn't been solved yet. Let me just point out, the problem keeps evolving. We have homelessness and substance abuse issues. We have mental health hospital. We have Calm Care Services, mental health services, if you will. We have Human Services Campus. We have Pipeline for the Health Sciences, part of this discussion that Dr. Muma and WSU is interested in. The other names that have been mentioned, we heard, you know, some of the contractors that provided the plane to go down to San Antonio, some of the folks that have an interest in what happens downtown are part of this discussion. The entire conversation continues to happen in a vacuum. The public has not been involved. I have not been involved because I'm not able to participate in these meetings because they happen in a closed-door situation. Trying to avoid open meetings act, in my opinion. Every commissioner has not had a chance to have the same access to the same information that everybody else has had. And the conversation continues to evolve and move forward. I'm not sure who's in charge. I'm not sure who...someone just mentioned a minute ago, "they are doing something." I'm not sure who the "they" is in that sentence that you used, Mr. Manager. Reality is, I think that the public has a great interest in this topic. I wish we...I wish we could turn the clock back about three years ago and involve the public in a much greater degree. If you go out there and talk to people, what's the greatest need in Central County? Almost everybody will say mental health issues are bubbling up to be the number one issue and have been that way for a long time. It was all...it consumed the front side of our legislative platform, a card that we sent out to Topeka last year. So we can talk about this and talk about it and talk about it, and we have been doing this for years and years and years, and we're not getting anywhere. We also know we've just spent, I don't know how many hours, we've spent in budget hearings this year so far, understanding the great fiscal challenges of Central County. And these ideas, although they sound wonderful, I have to bring myself back and say, where's the funding going to come from? And I would argue that I think these are important priorities for our community, but we need to ask the public to be part of this discussion as well as other commissioners. We need...I think we need to have an advisory board that's appointed by the county commission. We have taken the topic of mental health as a county priority. And generally speaking, I think the issues of homelessness is...has been in the past, has been primarily a city priority. And we've now blurred those two lines together and we've added substance abuse issues to that. I'm not sure who's in charge. And I think an advisory board that is appointed by elected officials that we have a chance to participate in, and the public has a right to know what's going on, is critical to this discussion. There's a lot of good ideas out there, but there's not funding for this. And so, we can talk about grant money. We talk about the state is starting to talk about putting a mental health hospital in this region. We'd hope that happens. There's a lot of issues in play. At the end of the day, this is a problem. If it's going to be...if it's going to be solved, it's going to be solved by taxpayer support. We need to include the taxpayers in this discussion. And I'll say once again, if we put this on a ballot question and ask people for their support for a dedicated and consistent revenue stream to take care of these issues for this community, that's something we need to talk about and we need to get that moving forward as a starting point. Otherwise, this is all just a lot of talk and no action. And I feel like we've been doing this for years. So I am frustrated. I...there's a lot of great ideas out there. San Antonio is doing a wonderful thing, but they've got a revenue stream. We don't have that. And to find this money in our existing budget or think we're going to get the money from the state or from the federal government to solve this problem, I think is unlikely to be a long-term solution. So I think we need to talk to our people, our taxpayers, and we need to include the public in this discussion. These are all great ideas, but I'm tired of...I'm tired of...a festering problem is getting worse and it seems to be no actual solutions coming forward. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I just ask us to seriously consider a ballot question to create a revenue stream and bring this back to the public's discussion. So the public has...every person involved in this discussion so far potentially has reasons why they're personally involved that we need to recognize. I think the public wants government officials, elected officials, to solve this in a way that they understand what's happening and why it's happening. We don't have an interest in this in any other way than the fact that we think that this is a community problem needs to be solved. I don't have any way to profit from this, and I'm sure that no other commissioners will profit from this in any way. I don't have any dog in this fight other than I just care about this community. Many of the other folks involved in this have reasons why maybe they should be distanced from the discussion a little bit and let others take the lead. I'm concerned that...I'm concerned that this entire discussion's been led by people who have conflicts of interest. And so, I am concerned about where we're at right now as a community. I don't think that this is moving as forward towards a solution as is. We need to have a new conversation, a new advisory board and a revenue stream. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Let me provide a little counterpoint. First of all, I think we've had a lot of successes in the recent past. First thing is, there's $15 million in the governor's budget that's available to help have a regional mental health facility here in Sedgwick County. We've got requests in to Spark for another $25 million. Actually, we got it in for $40 million, but we'll take $25 million to bring it up to $40 million in order to build that hospital here. So that's one thing. I think we've had some successes. We've had some successes on increasing the fees and so forth that are provided so that we can afford to provide the services that are needed. So we've had some legislative successes this past year. The next thing is that let's look at what Sedgwick County has some responsibility for and where we've got funding. We have in our budget right now, in our CIP, funding for a Calm Care Facility. That money is sitting there. We know that we need to build a Calm Care Crisis Center, a new one. The decision is, hopefully, as we work through this Health Science Center discussion, we'll find a location for that Calm Care Crisis Center. Remember, everything is on a pretty quick timetable right now because a lot of the money that's coming down to fund things like this Health Science Center and the Mental Health Hospital are coming out of the ARPA money, the Spark money that's available. And so, that money has to be allocated by the end of 2024 and spent by the end of 2026. So decisions are going to be made here very quickly in the future. Let me talk about the advisory committee that Commissioner Howell mentioned. We do have a committee. It's called the Mental Health Substance Abuse Committee that is serving right now to try and work through this process so that we can figure out what the correct solution is for the future. And that's what the purpose of that organization is. So where is the money at? Because that's the thing that drives the entire decision for each of these different projects. Calm Care Crisis Center, the money's there. Check. The Mental Health Hospital, hopefully, the money is there. We're going to find out in the near future. Check. The Health Science Center, we've already gotten...our WSU's already gotten some pretty good funding to start that process and hopefully, that they can get the rest of the money. But that's up to KU and WSU. Let's not confuse with the rest of these things, each of these different projects that are moving forward, because they've all got different sponsors that are working those and each one of those are having a separate funding source. And whatever happens with the Health Science Center is up to KU and WSU. They are bringing the money. I haven't seen anyone else bringing money to the table for that. So they're going to be the ones that make the decision on that. The Hub or Campus, that's critical. We think that...we know that that's something that needs to happen in the future. The Mental Health Substance Abuse Coalition is working on that, but that's going to require some private funding. Government cannot do it all. I've said that, I don't know how many times in the last four or five years that I've been on this commission. Government cannot solve all problems. We have to have businesses in the community involved in this. Whoever funds this hub is going to have to...we need somebody like Valero. We need a whole bunch of those organizations because it's going to cost a lot of money. The location of it has to be completely transparent. Whoever puts this together and comes up with the funding is going to have to come up with the location. That is not the Board of County Commissioners' responsibility. We have a lot of responsibilities involved in this, but that is not one of ours. Certainly, we have a couple commissioners. Commissioner Cruz and I sit on the Mental Health Substance Abuse Committee and we're helping them and giving them advice. But actually, both of us are ex-official members and we don't have a vote on that. We're there to listen. We don't...neither one of us have a vote on that commission. So we are not driving that train. The Mental Health Substance Abuse Coalition is driving that train and they're the ones that have to come up and find out where that they can find the funding for that. So there are a number of balls in the air right now. Some of those balls are going to be coming down and we'll take them off the table in the near future and other ones are going to stay there and other issues are going to come up in the future. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate your comments. This is all about collaboration. No matter who is paying for what, we have to collaborate with each other because at the end of the day, these systems work together. All of them do. And it's vital that we recognize that one person bringing in whatever they bring should fit into the system, which is why a consultant, I believe, is...that's an outside entity coming and letting us...that has no skin in the game to figure out how our systems can work together is crucial to the success of this. This book right here, this Lean Behavioral Health book that I talked about, I'm just diving into it, it talks about collaboration, talks about coordination of care. When we want to reduce the number of people in our jail, when we want to reduce the number of people who walk into Calm Care, all of these systems are interconnected. And at the end of the day, if we don't fix these things, crime rates will still rise. They will still go to our jail, which is what we... They will still go to our jail, which is what we, as the Board of County Commissioners, do have control over and are tasked with managing. And so, I just cannot stress enough how important it is to collaborate with, with every single decision made. And I hope that we will foster that as commissioners, and we'll foster that with each other, to make sure that the people that are receiving this care get the best possible care that they can receive to stay out of the revolving door of a system that is not working currently. So I, I appreciate the conversation. Thank you both for bringing this up today. It's crucial to work together. It's not about who has the money, although, yeah, it is really important, I get that, but whoever has the money has to be willing to do what's right, so that we actually solve issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to other topics. Anyone else have anything entering other today? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Executive session.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez.
Okay. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 45 minutes until 10:55, under the justification of matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship for the purpose of discussing two separate subjects. The first subject is a discussion pertaining to potential settlement of a legal claim against the county, and the second subject is a discussion of the legal issues relating to the pending case. And that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at 10:55.
Thank you. I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And we are in recess. Are we meeting down in the boardroom, or are we standing here? Down in the boardroom? Very good. We'll see everyone down in the boardroom.
Chairman.
Okay, it looks like we're back live. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. At this time, I'd like to state that during the executive session, no binding action was taken. Do any of the commissioners have anything that they'd like to include before we adjourn? See, nothing. We're adjourned. And I want to thank everyone for joining us today. This is not part of the Board of County Commission meeting, so our Madam Clerk is going to be excused. Thank you very much for your service today.
Chairman, we need just a few minutes for the transition here, just a couple.
Very good. So, we're going to wait for five minutes and then we'll resume. Thank you.